We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the May 30, 2013 meeting.
The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 30, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 23, 2013, as submitted. Megan Palmeroy provided a review status report on the request for a letter of support from Douglas Polly Harbinger Developments for a proposed housing project for low-income seniors. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission declined the request and approved and authorized Megan Palmeroy to follow up with a reply to Bailey Englasser, L.L.P., who's the attorney for Douglas Polly, concerning the proposed project. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the West Virginia Homeland Security Grant Program application and the amount of $15,000 for the benefit of the Office of Emergency Management to be used for the purpose of interoperable communication equipment, as discussed on April 4, 2013, meeting of the Upshur County Commission. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant application and related documents. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign correspondence to Progressive Bank, N.A., authorizing Megan Palmeroy to access financial reports and data concerning Upshur County accounts. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the employment of the following part-time seasonal personnel for the Upshur County Recreation Park Pool Facility. Daniel Scott Bellamy for concessions at the rate of $7.25 per hour, Ashley Barlow as lifeguard at the rate of $7.55 per hour, and Richard Jones as lifeguard at the rate of $7.85 per hour. Effective date of employment for all is May 28, 2013. The commission discussed the appointment of a county commission representative as board member for the Upshur County Convention Visitors Bureau. Donnie Tenny made a nomination to appoint Megan Palmeroy. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the appointment and approved and authorized the commission to sign correspondence to inform the CVB of the appointment. Megan Palmeroy advised the commission that she has received a reply from the Ethics Committee concerning her inquiry pertaining to the Adrian Public Service District nominations for a board appointee, as discussed at the April 25, 2013, commission meeting. The committee found no issues with either candidate. Donnie Tenny requested Ms. Palmeroy to follow up with Adrian Public Service District for a preferred recommendation and deferred action to a future meeting. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of correspondence from Chuck Marks, Windermar Incorporated, regarding compliance with the Upshur County Flood Plane Ordinance and status update on the conditional letter of MAP amendment from Federal Emergency Management Agency. After discussion, Donnie Tenny advised follow-up with Terry Joe Bennett, Flood Plane Manager/building Permit Officer, for clarification. The item will be placed on next week's agenda for discussion and/or action. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, as listed. Number two, meetings, as listed. Number three, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The commission approved the following request for time out of office, as listed. Upshur County Sheriff David Kaufman and Chief Tax Deputy Sheila Adams and Carol Smith, Bookkeeping Department, appeared before the commission to discuss budget issues. The budget revisions will be placed on next week's agenda for action. The commission recessed at 12:15 p.m. The commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. David Barton, Shenandoah Valley Group Representative, appeared before the commission and provided a review of Sheffield, Olson, and McQueen Incorporated Medical Benefit Plan for Upshur County Employees. The commission recessed at 2:30 p.m. The commission reconvened at 7:00 p.m. at the Buchanan City Hall to attend the joint meeting of the Buchanan City Council. Present were Buchanan City Council Members Kenneth Davidson, Rich Clemens, Pamela Capery, David Thomas, Ron Pugh, John Walz, and Thomas O'Neil, and Upshur County Commission Representatives Donnie Tenny, J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Megan Palmeroy, and Jacqueline Denklocker. The following agenda items were discussed. Call to order, the Pledge of the Flag, items of discussion. Steve Foster, UCDAs, review data completed by Buxton Survey. Jim Ferry, OEM, and Jim Farrell, OEM, combined efforts, safety planning, encouragement, and action planning. Jay Holland, City Engineer, WVA RNG, project update. Additional comments and discussion. Mitch Tacey, Buchanan Fire Department Fire Chief, addressing and mapping insurance concerns. Megan Palmeroy was requested to follow up. Dave Thomas, fundraising calls, disclosure of administrative costs, percentage to charity, consider endorsement policy for City and County. Dave Thomas, identify offenders using profanity in public and/or illegal behavior. Tom O'Neil, towing issues. And then they had an executive session, police personnel per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4, and then adjournment. With no further business, the joint meeting of Buchanan City Council and the Upshur County Commission adjourned at 8:30 p.m. And then the Buchanan City Council continued their meeting and executive session.
Let's see, are there any additions or corrections of the minutes as we head?
Yes, on page one, paragraph seven, I believe that should read Ethics Commission instead of Committee.
Okay. Without duly noted, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our first appointment is 9:30, we have 13 and one-half minutes, so we'll move on down to other items. Review and consider board member appointment to Adrian Public Service District for a term ending October 31, 2017. We had asked them to give us a name, and their response was, "You ask for the first choice of the board of directors for completing the term of Sharon Bowen. After some thought and discussion, I have selected Paul Spencer as first choice. Should you have any questions or require additional information, please let me know. Sincerely, Don Kelly's worth Chairman, Adrian Public Service District." So that is their name that they would like to submit for us to approve. Do we have a motion to approve that name?
Still moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item, Discuss Brooksville Community Request for Contribution to Community Fair. They're asking for us to... The community group holds regular fundraisers and socials in order to raise funds for the maintenance of Brooksville Community Building and its grounds and keep it open to the public. It's a small community, we have difficulty raising enough funds to maintain the building and grounds, host an annual fair without assistance from the county. We'd like to discuss the options available to ask for funding from Upshur County Commission. Please contact me, Bonnie Schraus. We had had a request before, earlier on the pavilion, right?
First stage.
At the stage, and explained to them that there's several little communities around, organizations, and that we've... You know, I was thinking, because we do have another request down here for, what is that, Create Buchanan, or where they want the pool party?
Pool pass.
Is there something we could give them up there that would be relative to the library? That would help them as an item that they could raffle or something?
Near Curry Library?
Yeah, something that we could give the Brooksville Fair Group, the Brooksville Community Group, a gift, like we're considering here, where we give them a pool party or something. Is there something at the library that we could give them that they could use to sell or raffle or make money?
There, in that area, there is a camping site.
Right, maybe we could give away a weekend of free camping, or, I don't know about the library, we don't charge for anything there, do we?
I believe we do charge for camping.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're supposed to be charged for camping, but at the library, I don't think there's anything that's, I think everything there is free, isn't it? But I was just thinking, if there was something up there we could donate, because usually those are the folks in that area, maybe we could donate a free week of hunting or something.
Because Brooksville is part of their fundraising, do they have something where that would be applicable? That words, do they have fundraiser?
Oh, yeah, they have different kind of...
Silent auction apps or things like that.
Yeah, they could do that.
They do have fundraisers. I think, though, if we give money to the Strawberry Festival and the Upshur County Fair, I don't know what's the difference between, well, I know the difference between Strawberry Festival, you know what I mean, and Brooksville Fair. But if you donate money to one, you should donate money to all three. I mean, it's not fair to give money to the Upshur County Fair or the Strawberry Festival and not help Brooksville out in some way, shape, or form.
Well, the only problem with that is, if you look at all the different little community organizations around that have fundraisers, and that's basically what this is. I mean, there's an Outland Community Building, there's Washington District Fair, Hodgesville has something, and so if you do, now, you know, that's the Upshur County Fair, and that's the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, which is county and state. Now, if we're going to do something for every community building, because I'm not sure how many community buildings, I know there's 10 Mile, there's 10 Mile Community Building, they have an organization, they do socials, you guys probably been there when you was campaigning. There's Indian Camp.
I've been to Indian Camp campaigning.
Hampton.
But they don't have a fair, do they?
Outland, well, but it's a fundraiser. That's what they're saying, it's a fundraiser, they want to help, they're raising funds to help keep the community building open and repaired.
And they do that through socials and everything.
Right.
But I think if you donate money...
But they're asking specifically for money to help with the Brooksville Community Fair, July 26 and 27. They're not asking for assistance in fundraising.
Well, but that's basically what they're asking for, if you look at the, here, it says, "The community group holds regular fundraisers and socials in order to raise funds for maintenance of the Brooksville Community Building and its grounds and keep it open to the public." So it's a fundraiser. I mean, I don't have a problem giving, but I just think that we better be ready, because somebody's going to call us from 10 Mile, and somebody's going to call us from Outland, somebody's going to call us from Indian Camp, and somebody's going to call us from Hodgesville, somebody's going to call us from Sand Run, somebody's going to call, all these little communities that have a building that they have to maintain, they're going to be asking us for money. So before we commit to doing this, I think we need to make a list of all those community buildings that they have, the community has to maintain, see how many there are, and then decide how much we want to give total, and divide between all of them. I just think, if you're going to give it to one to maintain a community building, then to be fair, you have to give it to all of them. It's just my thought. But anyway, basically, she's asking, so that's something we can kick around, because we'd like to discuss the options available to ask for funding from the Upshur County Commission, so I think we can think about that, and, but I think, to be fair, if the purpose of it is to help maintain a community building, then we need to list all the community buildings in Upshur County, because they have fundraisers, just like they're saying here. This community, the community group, holds regular fundraisers and socials in order to raise funds for the maintenance of the Brooksville Community Building. That's what it is, whether they call it a fair, a social, whatever.
And I think most people does that. I mean, Tomlinville, and they all have socials and get together and raffles, because they all need money, you know what I mean? But I think if you're going to support the Upshur County Fair, and you can go, well, that's Upshur County. Well, Brooksville is in Upshur County, too. It may not be called the Upshur County Fair, but I think if you support one, the Strawberry Festival down, we should look at all fairs. And I understand, if you give money one place, everybody's here wanting money.
Right, yeah.
I think we should, like you can take your recommendation, defer it until we have a chance to do some research on how many buildings there are that would, how many potential people, organizations would ask, and then determine what our response can be. I think your point is well taken, in terms of a tight budget.
I agree with what you say. If you're going to support a fair, Upshur County Fair, then maybe you need to consider this, but the same token, then, that would apply that if you're going to support community buildings, an organization in communities, then we need to apply the same principle to those. So I think we need to kick that around, and then we decide, because basically what we've done, we've made up, we've got a certain amount of money, 25,000, I believe, that we divide, that we set aside to divide for Strawberry Festival, Upshur County Fair, I'm not sure where all goes, but we looked at the list of budgets.
Cross lines.
Cross lines, yeah. But there's a block of money that we give, and we could take a look at that and see where all is allocated, and then basically reallocate it. If we want to break it down to the community levels and give some to each community, then we could see where we reallocate that. Okay. Now we've got the Boy Scouts of America Announcement and Invitation Regarding Eagle Scout Ranking for Alexander Ellis and Seth Edward Blake, and Approval of Letter Acknowledging Achievement. And Megan has drawn up a letter.
And there are actually three more names on that. We received a letter from the Boy Scouts of America regarding Alexander Ellis and Seth Blake, but we have since learned that there were three other individuals who have been promoted to Eagle Scout rank. We didn't receive letters, but I just noted them in the letter as well.
Okay, okay. Well, so basically, what we could do, what we could do is approve this letter, and then my thoughts are, if we approve the letter, then anytime anyone gets promoted to that, we have a letter approved that we can send. Does that sound agreeable? And then that way, we know it's approved, and then the following commission meeting, then we approve the signature on those, and then we send it out. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion, then? You have a letter here on page six.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And, let's see, Discuss Requested Donation to Create Buchanan for Pavilion and Pool Rental Auction Item Fundraising for Upshur County Events and Projects, on page seven. And that, back here to seven. I'm writing you on behalf of the members of Create Buchanan for support in upcoming fundraiser. It has now become a tradition to support the summer production of Buchanan Community Theater with a lunch on the lawn and a silent auction. These two events have proven to be Create Buchanan's biggest fundraiser of the year. The profits from these fundraisers assist our committee with such projects as Festival Fridays, Jawbone Park tree planting, holiday lights, and so much more, all events designated to promote Upshur County. I'm requesting a pavilion rental or swimming pool rental in the county park as an item for a silent auction, and will likely be paired with a gift certificate from a local food vendor to make a very nice auction item. Obviously, the pavilion pool rental will be subject to date availability and all rules and regulations set forth by the county. Thank you.
I would move we provide them with a pavilion rental.
Okay.
Can I just say yes?
Sure, right ahead, Rick.
You know, is there a precedent on anybody? Have we ever donated this same item to any other organization in Upshur County?
Yes, we have.
For a pool rental?
No, yes, for a family pass.
Pavilion rental.
For a family pass, yes, but I'm not talking about for a whole party type of situation. Is it just a family pass that you're going to be doing, or are you just renting out the whole pool, like a party?
No, this is for pav-, his motion was for the pavilion back in behind, just to...
Out and out of the park, not at the pool.
Right, not the pool, not the pool.
Okay, very good, because my concern would be, if you were to do it at the pool, and then, of course, the cost maintaining with the lifeguards and everything else we're doing with the staffing, but if it is for the pavilion, I think that's not a bad idea.
Well, we've done, Amanda, at Ucare, we've donated, didn't we donate a couple pool parties?
Passes.
Or passes.
We provided a pass.
For the Ucare.
Did you donate for the pool, like, help us?
With the Ucare, yeah.
Right, which is a great community endeavor, and that's for the youth, of course, and that's a party sponsored by an organization that's dedicated to that sole thing. But what if you're giving away, what I misunderstood, then, was that you were giving away the party there, like a Ucare party, but for Create Buchanan, or whomever they're giving that donation to.
Right.
Or whoever the winner is of that, so, never mind, then, as long as you're doing the pavilion.
You're okay with that.
I'm all right with that.
Thank you, Rick. He's just preparing us for Tim Higgins, aren't you? He's getting us in the right mode for Tim. Okay, so we have a motion to donate a pavilion rental. I'll second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, this carries. Okay, we have correspondence from the, and a request for response from Secretary of State, Updating Public Service District Information, on page eight. We just need to send them our members and explorations and emails and telephone numbers and then...
So I just want approval from you to be able to put together those lists.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion, then, that we approve, authorize Megan to put all that stuff together and get it to the Upshur Service Commission?
Still moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, well, it is 9:30, and we have the sheriff, and he's brought a whole tote full of donuts. Is that donuts? No. It's paperwork.
I apologize.
Okay, well, okay, well.
Want to say that? Yeah.
Your, our next agenda item, Dave Kaufman, Sheila, Sheriff, and Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, Budget Revision. So step right up, Sheriff, and you walked in just in time.
I have a question. Does Sheila get a badge? So she's tax deputy, she have a badge?
She has a badge.
You get a badge?
Don't you, Sheila?
You do?
Yeah, she got a badge.
Long time ago, my first sheriff.
Yeah.
Do you know where it's at? Do you keep it with you?
Amanda, how are you? Good. I'm doing well, thank you.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Donnie.
How you doing?
J.C., buddy. How we doing today?
We're doing, we're doing great.
All right. What do we want to address first, gentlemen?
Well, let's talk about budget revision, how's that?
Well, we can do that.
I think Megan, and Sheila, and you, and Carol, and everybody...
There's been a lot of discussion.
Been working on that, and...
We've been working on that since about early May, I think, is when we first started. Sheila and Carol and I have sat down on a number of occasions to go over everything. It seems like the sheriff's budget is probably the most difficult to accurately project. There's a lot of variables there that, you know, you can take your best educated guess on what's going to happen during the year, but sometimes, especially in the Sheriff's Department, I think that can change a lot. So there were certain areas where the sheriff was over budget and certain areas where he was under. So we have already gone through a number of line items and picked out where we'd be able to cover a number of things from within his own budget. There were certain things that, when the budget was created last year, changed during the year, personnel issues. We had at least one deputy who was scheduled to be a road deputy, that he then went to the middle school, correct, middle school, as a pro officer, so that changed. So there were certain things that happened during the year that kind of changed where things were taken out of the budget, so there are some, you know, inconsistencies there due to what has happened. So in home confinement, there was an issue where it was not budgeted correctly, just the calculation didn't even cover the base minimum, so we know where we're going to get that. I think probably the biggest section where we need to cover is in wages, and that is due to the pro officer, and we actually get reimbursed for that.
Has the reimbursement come in yet from the board?
Yeah, I have reports that I have run for that specific line item, and we have received 29,320, 32 into the pro officer line item. So that is, you know, as far as like for CJ, where he was a road deputy before, and he went to, the amount that we've received for CJ himself has been 15,970, 57. That has been reseeded in to our line item for, and this is a revenue line item, okay? The budgeting, I receipt into revenue line items, Carol expenses out of line items on her side that are expense line items. So the amount that's come into that revenue line item, I think we're covered, we've got, according to the receipts, August, September, and then we had October, November, December, and then we had February, March, so those receipts total up to the 15,000.
And I think also, when the officer moved to the pro, we have a light item for pro officer wages, but since he was slated as a road deputy, we continue to take it out of those wages. We're going to move the money from the pro officer wages up into that, so that's going to cover part of it. So really, I think all the money is there, we just have to move things around, and then there's still a couple thousand left, I think, but when we were initially doing this, it was early May, so we still had about, I think, four or five payroll payments.
We should have the month of June's payrolls left, and what we did is Carol estimated that at 29,000, so we kind of tried to throw that in there, too, so we would know a more accurate picture of what it's going to look at at the end of June, what is it going to be. So our estimate, and Carol and I, well, we looked at that last week, and we came up with almost the exact dollar amount, we were only like a few cents difference with each other, and that was like a negative 17,000. So once all of this money is put back in and these budget revisions are done, because you have your pro officer that has to go back in there from that line item, and you have these receipts that have been reseeded to General County, that's never been put back to the sheriff's budget, I mean, I think that we're pretty close, we really are.
And so now that we're closer to the end of June, and we know, because we were leaving a bit of a buffer there, because when we first started doing it, it was early May, so now that we have a better idea, I think, of where we'll be, I think we'll be able to find the rest of that from within the other line items there, now that we don't have to, you know, be so careful now that we're getting closer to the end, so I think we've got it figured out.
Good. It's always a good thing when you've got it figured out.
Excellent.
Exactly. I mean, if you'd have said, Sheriff, this is your baby, figured out yourself, would have been difficult. Thank goodness we got these ladies on board that are dedicated, they know where to look.
They're the number of people.
Exactly.
Okay, well...
So that's where we're at today.
All right, so just a matter of any other details working out and making it, and then... So we, let's see, what's, when do those, we probably need a motion, they need to approve the budget changes, the revisions that we need to send to the state to make this work. We just need the official action, so you all can make everything and get it to the state by the deadline, because we don't want to, we don't want to get gigged on our audit for going over budget, when we've got everything worked out to make the transfers and make everything balanced, then. So I would ask for a motion, then, that we authorize the details being put into the format to send to the state to satisfy that requirement.
Still moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, now...
Thank you, gentlemen.
You have anything else, or?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
If you have the time.
We have time.
Okay, I think last week, we spoke on my request to hire a backfield position that we currently have for Rocky Hill. I'll need to present you a letter. This is a letter, I think, of concern, has a concern about Virgil Miller. And, of course, you can read it for yourself. It's my understanding, and it's his full intentions, that he will be here no longer than December 31 of this year. 31 of this year. As I said last week, you know, I need this extra deputy. I believe the people of Upshur County would like to see this extra deputy available. Some people say, well, you have enough law enforcement. I don't think we ever had enough law enforcement. It's just a resource that we can put out there that the citizens of Upshur County can benefit from. I believe there was some concern, with this position, the position's available, and it's my understanding that the money is available at this time. So for those two reasons, I ask the commission to support my request. I, of course, I think last week, and when I came up here, to be honest with you, I wanted to hire this gentleman immediately. And I think you, the commission had some concerns about that. And after giving this more thought and consideration, I think I wanted to bring him on now. I think that the commission's thought we'd wait till January 1 of '14. And I'm willing to work with the commission and basically draw a line through that and agree on the middle. I'd like, if the commission will agree, I'd be willing to wait till September 1 to bring this new deputy on board. The biggest reason, the September 1 date is a concern of mine, is that I really want to get this new officer, he's an out-of-state officer, he's certified out-of-state, but to come here and officially work for us, he needs to be West Virginia certified. And the way the system is set up now in Charleston for training for these type of people, they offer that training once a year, and that timeframe is the last three weeks of September. Now, I have found out that I, that we can work him without this certification. It would be the sheriff's discretion and the commission's discretion. I have a concern with that, is, you know, you bring a young man in here, maybe he's very familiar with the laws from out-of-state, but we put him out here on the road and we try to teach him as he moves forward in his new career. Let's just say, for example, that he'd make a poor decision when it comes to West Virginia law. That could be a liability on the sheriff and the commission. So that's, you know, that's my concern, and it's my interest to try to get him on board and try to get him in his school this year, and then we don't have that concern down the road. So that's my thoughts, gentlemen.
Okay, well, I think that, my thoughts are, and I understand the certification, and you guys understand it more than I do, but I do think it's important to be certified in West Virginia. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's another area you all have been working on as far as determining the budgeted amount for that. And this would basically, you'd have July and August, so there'd be two months of savings that would be applied to that.
Yes.
But it was my understanding, and you can elaborate on that, Megan, that was all the money there that was needed to, in order to hire another deputy, and you, we addressed the issue of the cruisers, and you said you could cover that with your existing vehicles.
I can, sir.
I think Carol figured that part of it, and then even last week when we were meeting, her and Megan went in and double-checked it again.
Right.
And they said, according to the verification, that the money was there, so.
The wage, there is a vacant position for wages, and then there's also a vacant position for insurance, so-
Right. We budgeted for the insurance.
There's a position budgeted for a new deputy for both wages and insurance, so.
Well, we also know that there are many things the government does, that maybe government shouldn't do, questionable, but one fact remains, and that public safety is a vital function of government. And to the degree that you've addressed our concerns as expressed last week, I appreciate it, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
You have thoughts on that, babe?
I would rather wait until Virgil Miller left before I give approval on hiring anybody. Not saying you can't have too many law enforcement officers. I looked at, looks like he's very well-trained in arms, um, schooling, but it would be my opinion we fill a slot after Virgil leaves.
Well, my thoughts are on that, that, and I'm not sure of the relevance between Virgil's position and this position, if we budgeted money for this, another position at budget time, then it's my opinion that the money's there for it. So evidently, at budget time, we've talked about, because we knew Virgil was going to stay for the end of the year, and if we've approved the amount to hire another deputy and the insurance, then it was our thought and approval at budget time for the sheriff to hire someone before the end of the year. And I think, I think that, you know, if he's willing to wait two months, then that gives a cushion, and I think, I think a couple of things is going to be different this coming fiscal year. Number one, you're going to be the sheriff for the whole year and not half of it, and we're not going to have all these transitions with pro officers, you know, and all that stuff going on. And then we're going to be, as in all offices, we're going to be monitoring on a monthly or quarterly basis overtime and time that people's working, where they're supposed to be working under 20 hours. We're going to be monitoring that more closely. So I think that's going, we're not going to wait now till the end of the year and say, oh, we got a problem. We're going to, we're going to know, have indicators as we go through the year, so. And the same way with this, I mean, according to the figures, we've got the money to hire him starting July 1, and the insurance starting July 1. So I think, I think it's a good faith effort on the sheriff there to wait till September to provide a little bit more of a cushion, so based on all that information and what we talked about budgeting and what we actually approved at budgeting time, I would approve and go along with the sheriff's request, simply because the money's there, and number two, because he needs to be certified. And if he comes on in January, then he's got to wait until next September to be certified, so.
I mean, that's my thought. How do you justify a vehicle for him?
Well, he's got a vehicle.
Got a vehicle.
Which vehicle is it?
I have a Crown Vic and also have Rich Moore's vehicle.
Yeah, Rich Moore's vehicle won't work because it has a police officer control vehicle.
No, but I'm getting ready to purchase vehicles here in July to make changes in that. Rich Moore's vehicle won't be on the road after this fall. It's pretty much wore out. Maintenance costs, repairs are going to eat me up if we attempt to keep it. The Crown Vic's got 122,000 miles on it. It's been, right now, Rick Kitzmiller's driving it. It's roadworthy as of right now, but there again, I'm going to address that with my two new vehicles that I hope to purchase here as soon as possible after July 1.
It's budgeted for the year.
Yes, right.
Would that take care of the vehicle problem, if you got the new?
I think so. I mean, you know, we may not have a spare, but if we come down toward, we have a major breakdown or something, we'll just have to sit down and look at it. I mean, if we all work together, I just don't think it'll be a great big issue, buddy. I think I can make it happen. I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios we could throw out there that could happen, but with what, with the fleet I have right now and with the budget of two new vehicles, could be a little struggle, but I believe I can make it work. I don't think I'll be back up here asking the commission for any additional money-
For vehicles.
For vehicles, other than what's currently budgeted.
Right.
And again, I thank you for your consideration in this matter, and I just want you to know that if this money or this position wasn't currently budgeted for this upcoming '13 and '14, I wouldn't be up here asking you for that, man. I wouldn't want to embarrass myself nor the commission in any way, because I knows purse range or type, coal severance, et cetera, the money's just not available. But if you can support me on this hire, I'd very much appreciate it, and I think the people of Upshur County would very much appreciate it also. So that's really all I have.
I view this, I want Virgil to understand that this decision is apart from him. In other words, he has not created a problem. He is not a problem. There's no apology due to us. He's provided full and faithful service to this county for a good number of years.
I couldn't argue that point.
Just let's make sure-
That's why I wanted to keep him on board to begin with. I wanted his knowledge. I wanted him there to kickstart me.
Right.
And I have used his services, and I have called him in and said to him down in my office, said, hey, this is new to me. Oh, I've done this a thousand times. Well, okay, enlighten the new sheriff on what we do here. So he's been a great asset. But he also knows that the agreement that I made with you gentlemen early on, and the agreement was also made in man-to-man, so that's where we stand at today.
He's provided excellent service to this community, this county.
Some people, some people, there are some people that, I mean, no matter what this decision you make, some people like it, some people don't.
Right. What happens if, become December 31 this year, Virgil Miller decides that he'd like to work until June of next year?
There'll be an issue that I'll have to address at that point in time. I'll have to give it a lot of consideration. I would be disappointed if he would come to me after the relationship that I have with Virgil.
But if he did, we don't want that present.
But legally, legally, I would have to, like I said, I would have to study, ask.
Virgil is a man of his word.
Well, that's what I was going to say. He says, I will work for the sheriff no longer than December 2013, and if I can work out some issues, I will leave prior to the said date. And I believe if that's what Virgil Miller states, then I think-
I really do too, gentlemen. I mean, I don't walk in his shoes, but I honestly, in good faith, believe that.
Right, right.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think we do. I think we need a motion to approve the sheriff's request to hire the deputy September 1.
Whatever the pay period is.
Is that a good date, Megan?
Well, I think, you know, if you approve him going forward in working on hiring him for September, we will need an actual letter at that point for bookkeeping purposes, saying his name, you know, his grade and everything.
The position, we could approve the position.
Right, right. I think the start date would either be August 25th or September 8th, depending on, you know, payroll and when you need him in here for the class and all of that.
August 25th, and there again, I already said I agree on September 1, but if the payroll is an issue, if you look at your calendar for September, the last three weeks of that month, the first day of training appears to me, I don't have it in writing from Chuck Sadler, but it would be the 9th of September. So if we wait till the 8th to actually make the hire.
Well, I don't think it's-
We're really in crunch time of getting him hired and prepared, I mean, you know, hire him one day, he may have to be down there that evening. I don't know how that class works. I do know the new guys, when they go to the academy, they have to report on Sunday. They don't get, they don't get to wait till Monday morning to show up. So I don't think-
The reason on that, the September 1 date, we were trying to work with Carol on that because that's in the middle of a pay period and that causes difficulties with her. So when Megan and I were talking, that's why we looked at the two dates of like either the 25th or the 8th, because the first, being the weekend between, is that midweek of payroll, and that's going to cause a problem with the pay.
And we haven't had the chance to talk to her about it yet.
I don't think, I don't think five or six days is going to make that much difference. So well, then we'd ask for a motion that we approve the funding or the position, and then you'll bring the name and we'll approve that at the time, but so that you have an understanding that you can proceed in that area, that the 25th then, that the hiring could take place with that position, since the funding's there. So do we have a motion that affects?
Sure.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay.
And-
That's a start.
I will second that.
Okay, all right. I think we've, unless someone else has some discussion, I think everyone understands where we're coming from and where we're going to, so I'm going to ask for a vote on, pose say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Gentlemen, I know there's some concerns with this, but I, being the sheriff, I definitely appreciate it and thank you.
Okay, now the good-looking one's coming up.
That's right. I can touch that.
There are three of these, and I need you all to sign each one.
We have our presentation of the delinquent property list, property tax.
Social Security number, credit card, it helps as well.
Do we need to take any official action or just sign this?
For the delinquent one?
Do we need to approve this list?
Yeah, that's what you're doing by signing it.
We don't have to make a motion or anything.
Well, let's do it, let's do it so, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the delinquent list.
So moved.
On second.
All in favor say aye. Pose same sign.
Does that mean I have to talk?
Yeah, you have to get up and talk. We've approved that you and your list, okay?
Donnie.
Yeah. Buddy made the motion and Judge second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Sheila.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Well, it's that time of year again, and this is the presentation of the delinquent list. These properties were assessed last, they were assessed July 1 of 2011. They were billed July 15 of 2012, so they came out last year. And this is the first process in the delinquent procedure for starting like tax lien sale and suits if we file suits, or the sheriff attaching properties, so this is the first step in that. We have personal property delinquencies of $233,448.90. We have real estate delinquencies of $351,161.49, and those two total $584,610.39. And you can see that total on that first sheet, if you all have a first sheet there in front of you. We had exonerations, you all know what those are, that they bring up each week for something that was improper, and those for the year totaled $61,261.92. Now, that brings us to where we at and what's the picture. I can tell you that I have ran a cumulative position report, which tells us where we're at as far as our tax collections, and we have collected as of May 31, 98% of the taxes. And that's a pretty good rate, and that's generally where we're at. Sometimes it'll be a little lower. I think the lowest it's been since I've been here is like 96%, and I think that was like the years that we had had some of those bigger businesses, some issues with those. So we're in a really good percentage rate. Of the original 14.8 million that were on our books for our accounts receivable at the beginning of the year last July, we have $401,561.64 left to collect. And those will come in, as you're familiar, people are continuing to pay those taxes. We will get, of course, much more real estate in- We will get, of course, much more real estate in as the time draws nearer for the fall sale to happen, for the tax lien sale. And then as people renew their license on their vehicle, they'll come in, because a lot of people do wait to that time. We did notice, when I looked, when I looked at the delinquencies and comparing it district by district, what I noticed was that the districts for personal property that were higher in delinquencies are also higher in delinquencies, exact same districts are higher in delinquencies on real estate. So what that indicates to me is that most of these delinquencies are because people are putting off paying those taxes because they probably don't have the money or it's being more of a hardship to them. So that, that kind of indicates. Our two, two districts that weren't higher were Buchanan and Corporation District. Those were actually lower in delinquencies this year than they have in last year. But I think, you know, as people get the money and as it comes around that they have to come up with that, that, you know, those will come in. Like for instance, on our 2011 taxes, you know, our, our delinquent list last year, you know, we had several hundred thousand, and now, right now, we're down to 37,000 approximately left in accounts receivable that haven't been collected. So you can see, you go from still at this point, several hundred thousand, down to a few thousand, so. That's kind of where we're at, at this point. We, we do have some businesses that we're looking at that have some larger tickets that we have to kind of look and see, you know, what's going on with them. We do have some businesses, smaller ones, that have gone into business, back out, and of course, as you know, from previous presentations that I've done, there's just not a lot of recourse on that once they're out of business. So we try to catch that stuff ahead of time as much as we can. I also have with me today a letter of approval. I need an approval. It's for a piece of property that's been suspended. It was suspended before I came, and it's remained suspended. There, there was some issues with the property, and it's an oil and gas on 70 acres on Buchanan River. The state has asked us this year, told us we could go ahead and come up and just ask, we, it's a formality, we have to ask the commission for authorization to sell a tax lien against it from 96 through 2011, and we'll get that back on the books. So I just need the authorization on that, and I do have a letter of request on that.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that request?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Vote same sign, motion carries. That's it?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have a good day. Thank you, Sheriff.
This is over that, because it was suspended before, and they told us just to come out, and we have the formality that they have to have a position.
Yes, you have to stamp that in.
If you give it to me now, that would improve it.
Probably stamp that in.
Yeah, I stamped it, approve yourself.
I'm just trying to get all this stuff back in there.
Apologize to us for anything. I hate to think that he thinks he has to apologize.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess we can do some paperwork when she gets to 12:30, half an hour before Tim gets here.
You know, you know, change.
Money was budgeted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Same thing, law enforcement, should support it. Public safety. Public understands that, if you don't do the right thing. Understand. It's a learning process.
It is that.
Okay, we have review cor, let's see, let's just, let's move down to...
Proven voices?
Correspondence in the Public Service Commission, billing problems regarding West Indian waters. This is a letter from the Public Service Commission.
They basically wrote a letter, apparently there've been a lot of complaints about billing issues. In the letter, they addressed the fact that it's most efficient for them to address each individual's particular billing issue, but I think at the end of the letter, they did recognize that there are some overall issues that they are going to look into. They had, there was a difference between an informal complaint and formal complaint for individuals, and then there are actual general investigations that they generally don't do, but given the amount of complaints, I think they did say that they will be looking into the practices and procedures of two companies, so. Just an informative letter, I think, it's a letter.
Preemptive strike.
We do have review correspondence from Chuck Marks, President of Windhamar.
And I told Terry Jo, she has someone in her office right now, but she'll be in.
Okay, okay, well, then...
She sent a letter, which explains our position.
Right. So we will, we have about 25 minutes before Mr. Higgins, time to address us, and so we'll start on the paperwork.
Tim, how are you?
We're, we're back, and we're gonna talk about item number six, review correspondence from Chuck Marks, President of Windhamar Corporation regarding clients with upstream floodplain ordinance, a status update on the conditional letter map amendment from FEMA. So anyway, you sent them a letter, right?
Yes.
Why don't you come up here, Terry Jo?
Can I just go to the table and just sign, Megan?
Ah, that's fine.
I had been, out in some of my travels, I had noticed some additional activity taking place out in that area again, and I knew that we had not received any correspondence from, you know, from FEMA or from the Windhamar Corporation, so I had come in and followed up with a letter asking for an update, and this was our response that we received that I believe was in your agenda maybe last week, isn't it?
It is in this one.
And this week, so.
And they say, "We have been applying cover to the fill area as part of our requirement to DEP notice of termination process." Now, what does that mean?
You would have to ask Mr. Marks that question. I have no idea, because our correspondence with them was they were to absolutely do no additional work in the special identified flood hazard area until we relieved the, we received the conditional letter map amendment from FEMA.
And we've not received that?
We have not received that, and Mr. Marks has not received that.
What is the normal timeframe for turnaround from such a request from FEMA?
Three months, maybe? Tops. From the way I understand this letter that was sent, they had decided to neglect to do that. They were going to wait and do their termination with the DEP before they requested their conditional letter map amendment, is what this letter says.
So they haven't actually even applied?
It does not appear to me that they have, no, sir.
But the first one was in September, so if they had done it at that time, they should have had a response.
Oh, we should definitely have had a response before now, yes.
So basically, where are we at then, based on all that?
Well, I'm concerned, number one, because they should never have put any fill in the special flood hazard area to begin with. Absolutely none should have gone in there until FEMA gave the okay with the conditional letter map amendment. So, I mean, at that time, we could have said, "Remove it all." But we wanted to work with them, if you remember. I know Mr. Brady was not here at the time, but the commission at the time wanted to work with Windhamar, because we had full reason to believe with their H&amp;H analysis that FEMA would probably go ahead and give them the conditional letter map amendment to go ahead and fill in the area. So, you know, at that time, we did not request them to remove the fill that had already been placed. Since then, you know, it was our understanding that they were going to apply for that through FEMA. Well, now with this letter that was, that we received a couple of weeks ago, they're certainly indicating that they did not even submit anything to FEMA. So we have fill in the flood hazard area that we should not have. We have activity going on in the flood hazard area that should not be going on with no intent to do anything with FEMA until, I don't know when, sometime in the future, maybe? I mean, I don't know. So I'm concerned, because the most recent activity has been that they've gone through and cleaned off the creek bank, you know, and they left all of that debris there, and I have pictures that, you know, I don't know when there's gonna be a flood. No one can say that. If we would have a flood tomorrow with the weather that we're getting now and a freak flood would happen, all of that stuff that's laying on the creek bank now could affect floodwaters upstream or downstream from where they currently are. So it's a concern for me, and it should be a concern for the commission.
And what they're doing, are they operating under any authority, whether state or federal?
None of ours, no.
Under federal authority, or state authority?
They, what they had said at the time, J.C., was that they had received approval from the DEP to fill where that pond was existing. At no time did they, I mean, they might need to get the DEP requirements, but they also need to get the local requirements, and then on top of that would be the national requirements through FEMA.
The local requirements, when you say local, you mean the county?
Right, yes, sir.
The state of the floodplain.
Right. And building permit, that kind of thing. I mean, even though they're not necessarily building something now, they're doing site development, which does apply under our building permit ordinance.
So there's three different agencies that need to get approval, and they've gotten it from one?
Yes, possibly they've gotten it from one. I've never seen anything from the DEP, so, you know, I can just assume that they maybe received something from the DEP to do that fill.
Well, it says here, "We were told we needed an H&amp;H study. This expensive study proved to be inadequate for the commission." Is that a true statement?
We did ask for an H&amp;H analysis, and just to clarify that, I would like to just let the commission know that when we requested that, you know, this work started taking place in the summer of last year, so we're looking at maybe June, July of last year is when that work began. The H&amp;H analysis that they gave me was dated November of 2009. You know, I wanted to give them the benefit of the doubt, because I do know that those studies are quite expensive, but we, they gave us an H&amp;H analysis that was dated probably for their requirement for the DEP, not from us. So for them to make that statement, you know, it's a little bit misguided, I think, because we accepted an old, previously done H&amp;H analysis for that area for the flood study. I knew in my mind that when we submitted that, they submitted that conditional letter map amendment to FEMA, that if this would not work for FEMA, who, you know, ultimately has the decision to make, all we can do is enforce their rules, that if they wanted a more up-to-date one, then they would request it. So, you know, I was willing to accept an outdated H&amp;H analysis that shows that what the fill they're doing out there is not going to raise the water. That's what they're saying in this analysis. So, even though it was outdated. So for them to make the comment that, or the statement that they did in the letter, I, I would totally disagree with that, because they gave us one that was done prior to even us requesting a copy of it. You know, whenever they come in and, and did the building permit and the floodplain permit, at that point in time, I told them, because of the amount of fill that they were gonna be doing in that area, and the whole area is ident, in the identified flood hazard area, that I would be, need an H&amp;H analysis. That's when they gave me the one from 2009. So I accepted it, knowing that whenever they submitted the paperwork to FEMA, if FEMA required, you know, requested or needed additional information, then they would be the ones requesting it, not the county.
Right. So basically, they're out of compliance?
100% they're out of compliance. We have a setback in our ordinance that says 50 feet or the width of the creek, double the width of the creek, you can't do any, anything in that. You know, they want the natural vegetation to be left alone in there. And as you can see from these pictures, they've gone in and cleared, completely cleared that creek bank, and you can see what's left in that creek right now. This is, right now, on top of the fill, this is a huge concern for me.
The brush that's there.
That brush, you know, that they've trimmed out of that creek bank is going to affect the waters, one way or the other. If, if we got a flood tomorrow, that would affect the waters, and that would affect your adjacent property owners because of that right there.
So what's our, what's our course of action?
Well, we had sent them a cease and desist notice to start with, and got the response of them finally coming in and doing the building permit and the floodplain permit, so...
Is there any way we can expedite the FEMA response?
They haven't applied for it.
They haven't applied, but have a...
They haven't applied for it, to my knowledge, J.C.
We're certain of that, for certain.
From what they say in their letter, it does not appear to me that they have applied for the conditional letter map amendment.
After they complete the portion of the project already, they can time up and announce termination, DEP, then we will work on applying for the FEMA.
Right. In September of last year, my last correspondence with them was that they were going to follow up with FEMA at that time. So I had been waiting on that correspondence.
Well, I would suggest that you explain in detail, once again, what they need to do to become compliant. Ask them, have they applied to FEMA? Have they, have they made application? FEMA's the main thing, right?
Yes.
Ask them, ask them, as of today, have you applied, and if so, when? That we could help expedite the process if you've made the application. That way, that way we know for sure from them whether they've done what they have to do for us to help them.
Okay.
And explain to them, if you don't apply to FEMA, then you can't do anything, and what you've done is illegal. And make sure they understand, and ask them to reply with, with the answers to the question, and I would explain once again that there can be no more work done in that area until the information is filled out for FEMA and the response comes back to FEMA, that they understand that, and that the sooner they apply for it, the sooner then they can have the potential to finish their project in a legal manner. And ask them to respond expeditiously, and then we'll see what their response is, and then from that point on, I don't know, if we, if we give them a cease and desist order and they're still doing stuff, what, I don't know what the next step is.
But I would document, obviously, as you have in the past, everything in writing, certified letters, registered letters, whatever is required.
You have a, you have a red name, something you need to...
I have a couple other things to preview with you.
You mind, Tim? You got just a minute? Have a cup of coffee.
They're done.
Just hot water, if you don't have it.
What about the, the debris that's in the creek? I mean, do you want me to also address that concern that I have in the letter that I sent to them?
Well, I think you should, and address the potential hazard. If that washes downstream and stops up in the river or something, it's too canny to get flooded out there.
Well, but also, it should be of interest to them, because not being in compliance, if something were to happen, which they caused their neighbors to have property damage or whatnot, then I think that would place them in a position of liability.
And you might address that also with the fill, with our proper, if they stand to be liable for potential flooding to other people's property.
One of the other things of the two that I have, I was forwarded an email in regards to floodplain issues, I guess I should say, about the Dodridge County Court case and the revised ordinance and concerns that this particular party showed of wells being drilled in the flood, flood zone. And just as a follow-up, I have been aware of the Dodridge County case, and we've been kind of waiting on a state level for that ordinance to actually be approved, and we addressed it as recently as just Monday and Tuesday, whenever I was at my required training for floodplain managers. And what the state is gonna do is, once it's official and approved, they're gonna get a copy of that and... to get a copy of that and do it like a comparison from the state model, which almost every county in the state adopted, as well as the new adopted one for Dodridge County, and just do like a comparison to give us an idea of anything that we may or may want to change in our existing ordinance. One thing that I did want to mention, I am not aware of any drilling well pads that are taking place in Upshur County that's in the flood zone. I have had two situations where an access road went through the flood zone, but the wells and the well pad themselves has not been. So, you know, just as a follow-up to that, I, I'm unaware of any in Upshur County. That's not saying that we might not have any in the future, and I certainly, you know, expressed the, the desire to get a copy of the ordinance, and that's going to be one of the things that we're definitely going to review in detail on the state level with the Flood Plane Association. So, there will be, I'm sure, some, probably some additional follow-up on the county's part if we want to do anything to change our ordinance at that point in time, once we get a little bit more information on it.
Before I forget, Megan, did, I tried to, I tried to forward a, a copy of that letter to Vivian, and I'm not meant to say successful, and I, Megan tried to explain to me, would one of you all try to get a copy of that to Vivian, just so she, she may have it, but this, because it does affect all county commissions. The other thing is, am I correct in assuming that, let's say, Tim owns his surface, he doesn't own his minerals, and they're going to drill a well on him, and they've notified him, they're going to drill a well on you, Tim, and you're going to be a millionaire? Now, is he have, is it his requirement to get a building permit?
Per our county ordinance, it is the requirement of a property owner to obtain a building permit. Now, I do have times that, you know, an oil and gas company would be the one that applied, and sometimes even a contractor would apply. But our ordinance clearly states that it's the responsibility of the property owners to obtain a building permit, but there's also a section of a penalty that can be held responsible is the contractor and/or the property owner. But ultimately, yes, it is the property owner's responsibility to get the building permit in our ordinance.
Building permit for what? To build a well pad?
To determine what-
Well, the site development would be considered, like in this case, would be the site development of what they're going to do to do access roads, clear off the land to put a well pad, anything like that.
The problem is, is that half the time, you don't even know what you're going to do until they've already done it, because they've got five days after the fact to apply for the permit.
Five days after the fact of what?
They can do, they can start construction without even telling you.
Without telling the landowner?
Yes. And if you don't believe it, there's plenty of cake. All you've got to do is go to WDsoro.org website, and you can find all sorts of stories like that.
And I think that's one of the concerns-
That seems to be ludicrous.
I think that's one of the concerns that had brought this situation to court was because of the, you know, of the notification to the property owner and things like that, because I think the model ordinance for everybody says it's the responsibility of the property owner. So, I know that's one of the things that caused it to be thrown out by one judge, another said no, that it's okay, is the notification process. So, I know that that's something that's definitely addressed in the new one for Dodridge County is what we were told on Monday and Tuesday. I, I personally have not seen a copy of the ordinance, so I don't really know, but I just know what I've been told, that that topic is one of the things that was addressed per the attorneys that helped Dodridge County prepare the new ordinance.
Now, that brings me to my last question. We talked about sending out notices in something, whether it's assessors or tax ticket or whatever, to, to let people know what the requirements are for a building permit. Where are we at on that?
I checked, I checked with the assessor, and the machine that loads the documentation into the automated process only allows for three items to be placed in. Those three items already taken, so that to put an additional notification there would not be feasible because you have to do it by hand in all of them, as opposed to automatic.
Is it the, the notification she sent out, is it printed on both sides?
I do not know that.
Because if it's blank on one side, you could just print something on the back side of it.
Okay, we can talk to the assessor about that.
Was there another option?
Well, I think, I think, only because of my experience that, since I've taken over the building permit, flood plain permit project, when we sent out that notice a year ago, that it was the responsibility of the property owners to get building permits for any project, you know, because when we changed the ordinance, our building permits probably tripled. And I do know for 100% that I had four building permits last year, excuse me, that property owners come in and obtained because of wells being drilled, drilled on the property. And that was the reason, you know, I know the, it was a huge success last year, so I just want to keep that on everyone's front mind that, you know, for building permits, any type of renovations or anything like that, you need to get a building permit. And so, that's when I had approached the commission about doing something in that regard. And, you know, because we do building permits for two reasons, two reasons only. Number one is so the assessor knows about the construction that's taking place so that she can do her project or her process of their valuation. And number two is to comply with FEMA and the flood plain ordinance. That's, you know, that's the reason they're only $15, you know, we're not making money on building permits. It's to, for the notification of who is required to be notified for any type of construction. So, you know, because it goes hand in hand with the assessor's office, I suggested putting something with the assessment forms that go out, you know, just reminding people again that they need to get building permits. And I know J.C. had followed up with me on that, that, you know, that Helen expressed that there's already stuff taken up. And, you know, I suggested maybe doing like just a postcard, you know, of putting it in there. Again, if that doesn't work, I still say, I think it's worth the county's time and effort and money to send all the property owners a notification of some sort, whether we put it in with something else or we do a separate mailing, I still think that it would be worth your effort to do that. You know, and that goes hand in hand of, of when I said that I'd like to do something for just those that are in the flood zone, you know, those parcels that are identified per our addressing and mapping and G I S that's in the flood zone, of saying, hey, do you know that your property is showing in the flood zone? You know, letting them become more aware, because every day someone comes in and they tell me they don't know their property's in the flood zone. So, you know, it's going to help me in the long run, but two, I think anything that we can do to let the public know and be aware of what the requirements are would be extremely helpful. So, you know, I would love for us to sit down and talk with the assessor, maybe as a group, and say, can we do that? You know, whether it's put a postcard, put, you know, an extra piece of paper in there ourself, or, you know, whatever the case may be, or to do a separate mailing. I think it would be great.
Right. The only thing is, if, with, with things that are going out already, that are being paid for, I mean, it'd probably cost $10,000, $12,000 if we mailed something separately. So, is next week our policy board meeting, Megan?
Yes.
Is it next week? All right, why don't you put that on the list, and let's talk about, let's talk about that and see. I mean, even if there was just a place on the, surely on those three pages somewhere, there's a place that you could put something that just reminds people about that, and could be printed on that something. So, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay. Could I maybe suggest that you talk with the assessor about it today so that she has time to follow up and get us an answer by next Thursday? Only because we're under a time gun now to get something prepared, to be put into those before the assessments go out in July. I mean, it's, we're already into the first week of June at this point. So, if we could talk with her maybe today as a, you know, as a group, and get her idea, and then give her a chance to follow up, that would certainly help us a lot, I think.
Do you have some, like a draft of something you would want to include to show how big it might be, you know?
I don't. I mean, I know we have, I think, should be on the computer in there would be what was sent out last year.
Okay.
So, and I know we had Ralston Press prepare that for us.
And how did we do that? How did we send it out last year?
Um, we sent it out in the fire fee statements is where we sent that.
Is that a possibility too? Is that something we've checked on?
Well, I, I haven't checked on that.
I have not checked on it, yeah.
I mean, we could, but the thing with that was, I actually wanted to do a separate mailing with the fire fee, and that was just to remind people that they needed to display their physical address, because again, I think that goes hand in hand with the fire departments and the emergency response and things like that, just to remind people that they need to display their physical address. Anything I can do to get public notice out there, I would be in favor of, even if it's doubling up in the fire fee or doubling up in the assessment, whatever. Or both, yes. I think that would be great if, and, you know, I don't know who we would need to follow up with on the fire fee, because I, I think you guys are-
Who's on that board?
Ed Bear is the president.
There's no commissioner?
I am on the commission.
J.C. is.
You're on it, okay.
I think you, I think you know that, Mr. Trump.
So, we'll sign that pass to you.
Sounds good.
And Megan, you can help.
Yeah.
Megan can help, if we get it from a couple of different angles, maybe we can. Okay, you have anything else?
The last thing I have, yes. May 24th, I sent a letter to a Danny and Shirley heater, and they signed for it on May 28th, advising them that there is a new structure that's being placed on a right-of-way that they own all of the property around. And because of the third structure being placed, that driveway is now going to be required to be named. I have heard nothing from them. They have signed for it, they had more than plenty of opportunity to receive the letter, get back with me. I did try to telephone call them yesterday, still no response. And the letter was dated that I needed any of their road name suggestions by Wednesday, June 5th. Because at this point in time, I'm holding up giving a gentleman an address because we need to get the driveway named.
And it's, the, the new addresses is, is not related to them? I mean, it's a different individual, but it's on that road, that right of there?
Right. I think they might be related somehow, because they have, both have the last name heater. This driveway is off of the Hunter Ridge Road up in the Rock Cave area is where it's located. Currently, we have two other structures right now that are assigned addresses off of that private driveway. So, when the third one goes in, that, which I think is probably already in now because they did get their building permit, it will change those two addresses to whatever the new road name will be, once we draw that on and assign numbers to them. But I need to get that driveway named, and we have not received any road name suggestions from Mr. and Mrs. Heater, who own all of the property that surrounds this driveway.
And you explained to them the procedure and give them a deadline, and if they didn't give a name, then we pick one? Well, if you follow the procedure, then.
So, I don't know if you guys want to take a moment to think about a road name suggestion that you would want to call it?
We've had a pretty easy day, and you're making it difficult, but I'll take a road name.
We can put it on the agenda for next week.
Huh?
We can put it on the agenda for next week as well.
Yeah. Well, but he's going to have to wait another week to, once he need that, so he can get his utilities and stuff?
Utilities, mailing address, everything, yes.
Well, why don't you give us a minute? We'll talk to Tim, we'll, we'll think about it, and then, then we'll holler at you when we get-
Do you have a list of names available that you kind of put together?
I, I made a copy of a map to show you the area of where the road is.
Okay, well, I'll tell that.
And then, all of the current existing road names that were approved as of April, and I have not, the, the last one I did, which was Laurel, Lauren Lane is on here, so I haven't had any additional. So, all my road names are on that listing.
Okay.
So, I can leave that for your review if you'd like.
Okay, sounds good.
Because we have, we have a 2:00 appointment, we can probably come up with something this afternoon.
Perfect.
Just pick a flower, just pick a flower, name a flower.
Okay. All right, Tim, step right up there, and you've got the floor.
What does this say?
Well, thank you.
10 minutes of lunchtime, so take your time.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Tim.
Uh, let's see, January 31st, commission meeting, I was here to ask about your involvement in the Association of Counties and the County Commission Association. And at that time, I learned that the annual removal comes up at the end of this month. And I believe at that time, you said that you were on boards of both of those and that you had, would ask the question whether the information that is now kept from the public, the paying public taxpayer money, would be available to the taxpayers. And I haven't heard from you.
So, the answer would be no.
That answer would be no?
Right.
Okay. So, at that, at this particular point, I'm asking, are you going to renew your membership in these two organizations?
Well, let me first just address the County Commission Association. I believe, Megan, if I'm correctly, it was, is it $2,500 a year?
Um, 29 this year.
2,900. That's the County Commission Association.
Right.
And what, what's happened, happened at my prompting is with the discount drug card that's available. Do you have one of those, by the way?
I believe I got one.
Make sure you get one before you leave, because it's a free service to all the citizens of Upshur County, and that's, that's one of the benefits of being a member of the County Commission Association. We get a print on every list of how much the citizens of Upshur County save because of that service that's available from NACO, National Association of Counties. Now, what's happened is, NACO has, has made a proposal to the County Commission Association that they're willing to give a portion back of the savings on that, okay? It doesn't come out of the, the taxpayers' money, it's just a portion that comes back from NACO. And upon my assistance and approval of the board, what they're, what they're doing with that, starting this, this year, they're going to, they're going to refund half of the dues of each county, of their county commission dues, half of them, and as, as that money grows, it may very well pay for all of them, that there would be no taxpayers' expense. But as of, as of this coming year, they'll pay half of that. So, that'll go from 2,900 to 15 something, whatever, 14 something, 1450. So, that's going to be 1450 to do.
So, what does that have to do with my question?
Well, your question, I assume your question is, you're concerned about spending taxpayers' money for-
Now, the, the question, the question at hand is, I'm concerned about the citizens that are paying the bill, no matter how small it is-
Right.
-or how large it is-
Right.
-do not have full open access-
Right.
-to all of the information in there.
Right.
And, and, you know, if you need to read more about that, chapter 20, 29B, 1 through 7, you know, clearly states that, that the preamble to that is basically that elected officials are here to serve us, we are not here to serve you.
Right.
So, within that vein-
Well, trust me, I'm not on that board to serve me.
I, 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 trust me.
Trust me.
I mean, you know, when I get to the, when I get to the point where an elected official turns around and tells me that you really don't need to see that, I am, trust me, I'm working in your best interest, is the minute I start to get very, very nervous. So, I am, you know, if there, if that or either one of those organizations or both will not have access to the, to the, to the taxpayers that are paying for it, I don't see how you can belong to those with the open access rules that we have.
Well, it's not a matter, there's a lot of information that government at all levels-
Name it.
There's a lot of information.
Name it, name it. Just, just start naming some.
Start naming them, J.C., and you're an FBI.
Federal level, a lot of databases are not available to the public.
I understand, I understand that, and-
Personnel files, personnel files of employees are not available to the public.
Of course, and that is exempt in, in 29B.
But see, as I think what, what the president indicated during your last appearance, that these are exempt from FOIA requests, the information-
And then, FOIA applies to public agencies, this is not a public agency.
Right, there's not a public agency.
So, it does not apply to this group.
I, uh, check 29B.
I have checked 29B.
Okay. And I believe, and I believe that there was, what, 29B 3, as I read it this morning. But it, there is, I, you know, I don't know, and as I, as you suggested last time, that you had communications between others.
It's just a mis-serv. It's, if, if-
And in fact, that only, that only applies to one group. The other group, if your concern is that there's a members-only section, one of those that you are arguing against does not have a, they have a login area, but there's nothing there. So, if that's your concern for Waco, there's nothing there, so if that's-
I don't know that. I can't log into, I can't log, I know, you're telling me that. I don't trust it unless I can see it, if I can't log into it.
I have the contact information for those groups as well, and they said they would be happy to talk to you about what is there or not there on the website. And they said that there's nothing on the website that is not accessible to the entire public population, for NACO, or, I'm sorry, Waco. So, I have their contact information, if you would like that as well, but there's nothing on that website that is not accessible to the public.
So why do they have a login?
Well, you, that's, you know, that's not our group, that's a private group, I don't know why, I think they're the thought group.
Right, and, and, and I, and I don't-
I think they use it in the past for voting.
I-
During elections, they, they have had it open at one time during the year to post results as the elections continue, and then there's nothing there for the rest of the year. So why they have that, I don't know, you would have to talk to them about that, but if your concern is that there's areas of the website that are not accessible to the public, your concern is non-accessible.
The other thing, Tim, with the Association of Counties, that each elected, each elected official in the county, the assessor, the sheriff, the clerk, both the clerks are prosecuting, turning, are individual members of that. So we can't tell them, they, I mean, we could say, we're not going to join, we could say the Upsher County Commission are not going to join-
Well, the end result is, it comes out of the county funds, which you control.
Right, but what I'm saying is-
Which you control.
We can't control them.
But you control the county funds.
Right, but we can't-
So you're paying them.
No, 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 no. If it's in their budget, if they've got the money in their budget to pay it, whatever line item it is, they can pay it. We can't tell them they can't join. You see, because they, they're elected officials just like that.
Right, but at the end result, you have the purse strings, and you can take that, you can take that budget part out.
Well, it's not budgeted in there, I'm saying, if, they can take it somewhere out of their budget, they can take it out of supplies, they can take it out of travel, they can take it out of training, they can take it out of anything they want to, and we can't, we can't eliminate those line items of their budget. So if it's in their budget anywhere, and they, and we decide that we don't want to be a member of Waco, then, and this has happened before, this has happened before, back years ago, there was issues, and the county commission says, we're not going to join Waco. Well, they changed the bylaws, Waco did, where the assessor could join, the sheriff could join, and they just, they broke it down, whatever their dues were. And all they did was, they just took it out of their travel, they took it out of their training, they took it out of some line item within their budget, and, and joined. So in order for, what you're wanting to do to be effective, you've got to talk to every elected official in this courthouse, and you've got to convince them not to join Waco if we decide not to. Now, the County Commission Association, now here's my thoughts on that.
Okay.
I've been on the board long enough to know that number one, this, this discount drug program saves the, the citizens of Upsher County money, that's a savings to them, okay? Now, we're getting half our dues reimbursed, that cuts it back to $1,400. And the County Commission Association lobbies in Charleston to help prevent unfunded mandates to us, which costs the taxpayers dollars. So they don't, they don't, they don't lobby for our benefit, they lobby for the benefit of the taxpayers for you, because there's always groups in Charleston that are wanting us, to make us do something and not giving us the money for it. That's 99% of what we fight in Charleston, is to prevent unfunded mandates. That's, that's the number one priority, legislative priority of the County Commission Association, is to, is to fight unfunded mandates.
Well, unfunded mandates, and I believe, JC, you gave that as, as the 911 fee last time I was here. That was an unfunded-
Oh, no, there's like a, well, they increased the, what they call M, or 911 medical, which requires us to have individuals trained in medical dispatching, which requires us to provide additional training at county expense, there's no funding coming in from the state or other-
So how do you pay for that?
General revenue, the, the way we do everything else. We have the assessment, the assessor provides us with a dollar figure that the property assessments will bring in, and then we sit down and budget the money out. And sometimes the purpose, the problem with unfund, with mandates, they may come in the middle of a budget year, in which you have not budgeted for a particular program, that all of a sudden is, I use the word thrust upon you. I'm not saying that, that what the legislature is doing is not a positive thing in many ways, but it's easier to pass legislation and pass the responsibility for paying for it onto another body like the county commission. Government, but the federal government, Congress does it to the states, so it's not-
Sure, sure.
It's not something that, you know-
The ultimate thing is, it comes down to the individual taxpayer, I mean-
And there's always that, there's always that unintended consequences. Legislation on the surface sounds good, but when it's implemented, and maybe a year or two down the road after implementation, you find out that there's been a cause and effect that wasn't anticipated when the legislation was passed, which may have some negative aspects on the, on the citizens, or on different government agencies, in terms of personnel, in terms of expenses, in terms of training.
Right.
We have, you know, we, the county commission in terms of budget, we can only budget what we're receiving through the assessed value of our property in the county.
Correct.
And of that, a large portion, what, half of it or more, goes to the Board of Education.
Seven, almost 70%.
Almost 70%, so then, we're left with basically what's left, and then trying to administer that in a fair and equitable way. And in the next couple of years, when you have reduced severance taxes, which are going to take, give us a hit, we've already anticipated that for the next two years, it's going to be tougher. And you see people coming in, asking for funding for various good programs, they're not bad programs, they're legitimate programs that serve the community-
Right, and I, and as I said, I have no-
And having to decide which ones we can afford.
I have no doubt that these are good programs, I'm just, my concern has been, and always has been, the fact that if the public can't see everything that's in there, I've got an issue.
Well, on Waco, you can.
Right, and I'll take that one.
So, and really, on the County Commission Association, for, for the most part, I mean, there's-
I, I, the end result is, is if I can't see it, and it's coming out of my pocket, it's wrong. That's it, that's the, that's the end result of it. And, and, you know, as you said, I believe, JC, you were talking last time about you were having correspondence back and forth. Well, as far as I'm concerned, if I'm paying part of that bill, then those communications are, are a business that you are conducting on the county commission. And, I mean, and that, that would be, that would be what it looks like.
That is a service, which is part of it, where you can request of other commissioners, how have you addressed this issue?
Right, and-
In the two years I've been on the commission, I have not utilized that service.
And those communications can affect me in the long run. And, and that's when I say, you know, I have an issue with a politician that turns around and says, trust me, you can't see this, but trust me, I'm working in your best behavior, okay? And that's all I have to say.
It's, I, I can, you know, and, we can agree to disagree, but, for example, on the national level, you have executive privilege, which you see every day.
We're not talking national, I'm talking about, all, all politics starts local, and this is local.
But the same, the same concept agrees, people have to be able to discuss things to some degree of confidence in order to get an open exchange of ideas. And then it's presented to the public, there's nothing that's done behind closed doors, after some decision is made to support or not support an issue, it's the getting together and discussing openly, candidly, what the benefits or, or the negative aspects are of a particular proposal. And if those are, I think generally recognized-
It's the, it's, it's the, it's the beginning of the issue where those things are, are being discussed, when, when an idea is, is eventually formulated, and then you're going to say, okay, now we'll present it to the public, because now we know what we're going to say, and the public was left out of the initial process, that is wrong.
And if they do not agree with the decisions or the governance of the elected officials, there is a means-
Right, but the elected officials have already made up their mind, and they're going to work-
I don't want to argue with Tim.
Trust me, trust me, Tim.
Trust me.
You, you, you wouldn't want to be involved in the whole process, sometimes there's decisions made here that, that it looks like, okay, they just made their mind up today, and that may have been a six-month process. You know, what, what's the saying about making sausage in government?
Yeah, if you don't like-
You don't want to watch it.
Right.
All right, I know that.
But what you can do, you can look at the end result of the decisions that we make here. And as far as the County Commission Association, they do a lot of things to help county commissions statewide, share information, and all that type of, and Megan can tell you that.
As I said, I, I don't have an issue with the fact that it's probably a great word to-
So you want to come, okay, then let me ask this question, you want to go, you want to go to Harbors Ferry with me this weekend and sit on the board meeting, you're more than welcome to go.
No, thank you.
Well, see, you don't want to go, you said you want to hear everything we say, well, that's the place to do it, at the board meeting.
But you're open to the public.